Mr. Sauer nominates Mr. Rasmussen.
The second.
We have a second, don't need it, but we'll take it.
And then I'll third you before the second.
Motion to cease nominations.
No move.
Okay, motion to cease nomination of Mr. Rasmussen being the only nominee, nominee. We can just do a voice vote, all in favor of Tim Rasmussen, President of Plankton Public School's school board for the 2024 calendar year, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, Mr. Rasmussen, your meeting is yours.
Okay, thank you. Move on to number seven, election of Vice President and Secretary of Treasury. Nominations for Vice President.
I'll make Mike Sauer.
Any other nominations? Nominations cease.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
All right, we'll go take nominations for Secretary of Treasury.
I'll make Deb Chetson.
They turn fast on these, isn't it?
I know it is. It's always a smile. It wasn't as bad as I thought it would be. They have some.
As long as you got Kelly, Treasurer.
That's the real job, absolutely.
Okay, no other nominations? If not, Deb's Secretary Treasurer for next year. Thank you, guys.
You didn't give us a chance to vote against us.
That's right, I did not.
Okay.
You guys forget something.
They were pretty quiet.
All right, number eight, approve the agenda.
Your initial draft did not have number twenty-four on their action item, so make sure your folder should have the accurate agenda, twenty, action items fourteen through twenty-four. Okay, with number twenty-nine being adjournment.
Yep.
So the agenda should be accurate.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Second to approve agenda, all favors to act.
Aye.
Close, no, motion carried. Move on to the consent agenda, number nine, starting at the mid, it's the last meeting. Everything looks all right there, we can move on to financials then.
So I've been hearing talk about band uniforms. Is that through A.D. or is that through administration?
No, that's through me, so we're, we're, we're working on it. We'll bring a presentation to the board before any action, because that will be an expensive item, and would be in next year's budget.
Oh, okay.
It'd be in twenty-four, twenty-five budget.
Okay. I didn't know.
Yeah, I'll have Ms. Beagle and Ms. Fulsus, they're going to come present to the board, I think, next month or March. And while they're sharing some of the progress in the music department, Ms. Fulsus will have a sample for you to decide and a budget for it.
Got through those, we'll go on to claims then.
Greenhouse still going?
Yeah, it'll up and running.
Covered in seal.
I can't tell you for sure what he's got in there right now. But I think you see, you'd see a light on in there.
Of course, it's about cheaper than being the back to sport.
Something propane.
Other questions on the claims?
Three.
I retain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I approve the consent agenda, I stated.
Second, approve the second to approve consent agenda, all favors to act.
Aye.
Close, no, motion carried. Pretend public comment, anybody that wants to speak tonight?
I'm gonna have two things, I'll, I'm in later too, but we want to thank you guys. It's been tough, but with all your help and your donation for Chris, it means a lot. And I owe you, I owe thanks to all you, administration, board, and school. And I just want to say thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Schulman. Simp, these are review. All right, move on to number eleven, discussion items. Be our board development, page forty-six and fifty, in the book.
This has probably a lot to do with the board and student learning and achievement. Boards are as active as they want to be with regard to being involved in student data and academic achievement, and just how much into the weeds you want to get is entirely up to a board, right? So, you know, you rely obviously on administrative team, primarily principals to educate your our student performance data, and what it means, and where the gaps are, and what we're doing to close gaps, and of course, you know, the curriculum that's being chosen by teachers and administrators to, you know, target, you know, high levels and achieve high levels of student achievement. So, you know, it's, every, I think if you had conversations with ten different school boards, you'd find a pretty good variety of how involved they might be in the committee structure or in a regular monthly meeting with regard to student achievement.
Second, just from going to state school board, there's presenters down there that talk about their schools that have presenters. Some of them have, you know, a set of goals for the year, and they meet three or four times a year to see if those goals are being met, and what they do to meet those goals, and get results on whether they're improving or not, you know, pre-regular basis. But then there's some, you know, we've never really been super involved, we have results a few times a year, you know, maybe, okay, some books or something like that once in a while. About as involved as we've been since I.
Kind of talking about Aquest, that's going away, correct?
I, that, that's just a prediction, that's not official.
Oh.
That's just a prediction on my part. I, I wouldn't be surprised at all if our new commissioner and the State Board of Ed, which, if you follow the unit camera a little bit, could undergo some pretty significant changes as well, in the makeup of the State Board of Ed, so I wouldn't be surprised to see Aquest be phased out. Probably wouldn't happen in the next year, but, but it, it could, I mean, that just gives you a label.
The problem is, results is, they change all that over a couple of years. Up time to get figured out, then it's something new.
We get results, test results a couple of times a year, you guys try to give us that?
Yeah, once we get through.
We got some last, last meeting.
Yes.
We're, we're required by the feds to, to, to conduct one summative assessment. Every school district in Nebraska has to provide one summative, that's our NSCAS. So, but every school district does a lot of classroom assessments, more so in the elementary, obviously, in more formative years, you know, than the high schools, so there's a whole lot of just basic classroom assessment data that, you know, teachers use on a pretty routine basis, with or without their principal, but more often with. You know, but it's, it's just the, obviously, the part of schools, I mean, and its accountability, and it's, and it's fine. Sometimes it doesn't seem fair, and as you say, it's hard, oftentimes you get some real good trend data, because you have changes in leadership and changes in philosophy and the sort, but well, it doesn't change a whole lot with regard to what we do with kids every day. When it comes right down to the time that teachers are in classrooms with kids, they, nothing changes too dramatically with, with regard to that, based on Aquest or NSCAS or, or variety of other things. But it's just a reality of public education.
So this is a stupid question, is there something you guys would want us to be more involved in, or do more, goals, anything, you know? Again, I think it's a stupid question, because as long as we're involved, the more you can go and do what you need to do. You know, if there is ever anything that you'd like out of the board, you know, bring it to us.
I would, I would say trust and support, most administrations just want the board to trust the education professionals. If you ever want anything or need anything, ask, with regard to assessments or achievement data, for sure, you know, but, you know, principals are the, they're the trained professionals, the teachers are trained professionals, so trust and support, if, if, you know, we will do what you ask us, we will provide what you request, you know, at any time. But it, that, that's, that is key, that teachers and administrators know that they're board, trust and support, they're board.
Well, I think we appreciate the data that we do get, even maybe if it doesn't mean anything, however, what it's up in the air as to what it, what you can determine from it, but we appreciate seeing the data. That was something that was in our goals to, we kind of wanted to see how we were progressing. Appreciate that. Any other comments on that section of the book? All right, we'll move on into number twelve, committee reports. I think you know what matters to us usually.
Yeah, and we've got an action item, I guess. Later, we can talk about it then, but, um, we just met one time, our board, or our committee, and we met with the investment guy. How about, you guys, have you gotten information on this, have you shared with him, what we talked about?
I didn't, I didn't share with him, other than it was going to be, the board was going to discuss and act on having one plan provider.
So we met last, which is.
Brian.
Brian. And went over, you know, he gave us his, basically, his sales pitch on what he could do, the teachers, they could basically handle everything that they were doing, they could keep what they have or, or switch, I mean, switch from four oh three to four fifty-seven, or keep what they have, or whatever, he could do it all. And he actually had some experience with what we're trying to do with retirement on, with the teachers through Kansas, he's worked with several schools in Kansas that already do what we're trying to do. He says there's no school in Nebraska that's, he knows of that's done this yet. So he's got, he brings a little bit of experience that way, too, so. So we met with him and asked some questions and stuff, and answered questions, I guess. And so.
He's a former teacher.
Yeah. So he kind of knows on their end, too, what they're doing, so.
Kind of like the Plainview's on the forefront of this, taking care of our educators.
Because we're, we're both two different outfits right now, and we kind of like to just stick with one or the other, I guess, so.
They can still keep their other plan with a different company if they want to, that's fine, but what if we contribute, it would all be through one company.
They'd have to do that on their own.
They'd have to do that on their own.
This should kind of unlock things with regard to negotiations with PPEA, you know, this is what's kind of stalled a little bit, because it's a, it's a bit of a pioneering type of, you know, discussion item, and so we will just kind of get it right, I think, and, and simplify it. And so having one plan provider, we'll, we'll do that, and put the board in a position to, I think, make a, make an offer that, that we hold, the PPA finds acceptable. So hopefully next month, the negotiations committee will have a recommendation with whole board for a negotiations package for the next two years.
Put that around, yeah. Any more, anyone to add to that?
No.
Okay, thanks for that. Go to number thirteen, review policy in seven oh five oh three and seven oh five five.
Okay, seven oh five oh three is quite an expensive policy, because it, it lets about two hundred and fifty people into our, all our activities without paying. So at, at some point in time, before all of us were probably here, the board said, senior citizens should get in free. That's, that's pretty generous. I don't know, I, I, some other schools do it, I don't know, Kelly, do you ever hear from some of our people? So.
That's just from Plainview though, right?
Plainview district, you live in the district, it's rare that Kelly, because she always asks him, I can hear him, she always asks for I.D.
Yeah.
Make sure there's sixty-five.
Sometimes at a place they're sixty-five.
And, and you do live in the district, right? Well, no, but my grandson goes here, and then Kelly's gonna say, yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry.
That's been as long as I used to take tickets, so it's been a place.
Yeah, and, and it's, so this is not incredibly unusual, but we do have a lot of folks that have passes, all regular employees and families, and that's, some, some schools, districts dangle that free pass based on working contests or so, but we have policy that says you and your, your family, so that's a bit of a, it could be, some, some teachers you can probably negotiate for that, I, I don't know, you don't have to here, because it's a policy, of course you can change it at any time if you want. Board members, family members, members of the clergy, and so on, so there's your, you know, free admission passes, it, you know, costs a little bit at the gate, but.
I have no, I could use my free pass, I have a.
When I go to a.
You get a conference, yeah, you get a conference pass, too. That gets you into away conference activities, this is just the home, obviously, home activities.
Good thing about that is when they have dance at halftime, and most of those grandparents don't have a pass, they haven't looked that far ahead, so they still have to pay.
And they, a lot of them come from out of district, so, yeah, that's a little bit of a lucrative night for us. It's a little busy, a little busy around here, but, but it's a hit.
Yeah.
Possibly, they were supposed to have practice tonight, and they canceled it, because there's not, some people can't get here.
Well, ten, Kate called, said, I'm not gonna drive the girls, it's going to have something happen, I feel like, ten will practice from the table.
Looks like the other one's just the concessions stand hasn't right.
Yeah, whether we need a policy for that or not, but we have one, and of course, we've got commonly known as the best concession stand around, and, you know, we're, we're fortunate to have, for example, Mr. Commandant, who has embraced it and has done so for years, and manages it very well, works closely with Tammy on ordering, and obviously, the spreadsheet and, you know, percentages of paying those out to activities and so on, and you see a lot of those balances down your activity. Financial, you know, essentially comes from concession income, but, so yeah, a couple of simple policies, actually, but.
I can't imagine there's another concession stand manager, or whatever his position is, that knows to a way, gives to check out their concession stand, and see how he can make ours better, they've got something better than us, he's like, I'll do it.
Yeah, he takes a lot of pride.
Takes a lot.
All right, well, that takes care of the discussion items, move on into our action items, number fourteen, discuss and take possible action or resignation of subordinated employees. And so tonight, we've got Mr. Schumacher's resignation, everybody should have got a letter here that we, thank him for so many years in the district, really appreciate it, he's been a great valuable asset.
It, it's been, I, I gotta say thanks to everybody, I mean, I'm gonna say it, when I, when I probably came, people thought, oh my God, but it's been really good, it has been a great career. Met a lot of great people, worked with a lot of great people, so, and it's not just administration, it's not just school board, it's not just other teachers, I mean, everybody here has been really good, so I just want to say thank you on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And some high school girls tell me that they were their favorite teacher, which kind of put me down a notch. Like, well, high school, right?
Too, have to have so the same kids if they're kindergarten.
Some of them, yes. I was teasing them though, but they were telling me, so it's nice to hear when high schools say that, high school kids.
Mr. Schumacher's leadership will be very difficult to replace, for sure, so obviously, as an alum, too, I mean, he bleeds pirate red, and we have a few teachers that are as positive as Mr. Schumacher is, and has fun teaching, and those are, are two pillars of being a teacher that kids remember, that, that kids will never forget. He loves school, and it's hard to walk away when you still love school, I can imagine, but you don't, I guess you know. So we, we will go to work to, to try to find a suitable replacement.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Chad Schumacher, which we're at effective at the end of the twenty-three, twenty-four contract.
I'll second that. Okay, so we've been seconded, we're going to vote, Deb?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Mike, yes, Wyatt?
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Motion approved five oh. And Debbie, thank you for your time, I appreciate it, wish you the best of luck.
I gotta find a big boy job now, that's the way it keeps going, you're not gonna just sit home and eat bonbons, so.
You can find that, it'll be busy. I know somebody who could use you.
You aren't himself, are you?
After a while, we're, we're gonna take a year off, I think, I just need to get through this crap and go on.
And then we move to number fifteen, discuss and take possible action, approving a request for early retirement incentive pay to Mr. Schumacher.
And Mr. Schumacher's eligible for the negotiated early retirement incentive pay, which is seven thousand a year for five years payable under January.
I'll make a motion to approve the application of Chad Schumacher to receive early retirement incentive pay based on the negotiated agreement.
I'll second.
Okay, move to the second to approve the early retirement, Mr. Schumacher? Myself, yes, Mike?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
The motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Move on to number sixteen, discuss and take possible action on joining seven previous discussed schools and creating a new activity conference to begin in twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Wyatt, did you get that, did you find that sheet? I got it from last one. It was about explaining the seven schools.
Oh, you have some information there?
I have it, I have to read it.
No, I haven't.
Just stole the last meeting. Yeah, there's some good information in there. You guys have a chance to look at that, and what's changed is the rate has dropped out. You filled by Atkins.
Yep, was told.
Any other developments that have changed since last meeting?
There's been a handful that have been approved in already, so.
Those that had their meetings last Monday had unanimous approval, I don't know for sure which ones, I wouldn't want to start to name them, but maybe three of the, of these schools had their meetings last Monday, but we all have very, very similar, if not just about exactly the same, action item, as we wanted every board to approve the same kind of language to move forward. And so we, so far, we've had unanimous support in the schools that had their meetings last Monday, and we all are hopeful and anticipate the same tonight, those are of us, the rest of us that are having our meetings tonight.
So if everybody votes to pass this as a done deal, then, or is it still gonna be another vote down the road when there are any bylaws?
Well, we, we haven't had that conversation yet, Mike, we, before we really start talking about the weeds, you know, the, the details, we wanted to make sure we were authorized by our school boards to, to go ahead and now get quite a bit more serious about how it would look. I would expect that we would bring bylaws back to our school boards, maybe early this fall, I don't know if early this fall is too early for that, or too late, I don't know, it's not, it wouldn't be incredibly complicated, but it would take some time to get folks together and, and create bylaws, which will essentially borrow and steal from other conferences, we're not gonna, you don't have to reinvent the wheel here so much, but, but I would expect that we'd probably bring back bylaws and say, hey, board members, does this look, you know, reasonable, here's how we, you know, came to these, so, so yes, I mean, without, to answer your question, yes, there will be another board vote to approve bylaws for this conference, yet to be made. And again, we're a year out, twenty-five, twenty-six, so some folks may mistakenly think this is being rushed.
It does, the numbers do match up pretty well. Who's out of this school?
For now, yeah.
Looks like a pretty good fit.
Is there an idea, or to, Atkins is a good ride, but I guess there are, I don't know.
Yeah, that's the longest one.
More than Atkins, it'll be the opposite. Harding can be a pretty good job, pretty, yeah, most of the hardy too. Good job picking schools that are all the way around this retirement center.
Any other questions you guys have? If not, I, I make a motion to support the administrative team to move forward in discussions on creating a new activity conference for Plainview High School, commencing with the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Second, I'll second, Wyatt, second. Okay, Mike?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Deb?
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved five oh. All right, move on then to number seventeen, discuss and take possible action on board committee assignments, voted by the president. I have the list from last year, you guys can all have it in the packet. I probably won't finalize this till next month, if there's somebody that would like to be on something that they're not on, or would like to move around, please let me know either tonight or in the next few weeks, if you have a preference where you wanted to be. Otherwise, I might move some things around a little bit, major changes, I guess. Can we tell you which ones want to get off?
Just don't take me out of negotiations now that it's over with. Tell me I'm something.
Yeah, just let me know one way or another, if there's something that you'd like to do differently, if that's all right, just table that till next week. Okay, move on to eighteen, then discuss and take possible action, appoint Dr. Darren Arlo as the district's non-discrimination compliance coordinator, ask for policy to a real order of removal. Basically, a formality.
Required by laws.
I retain a motion on that one.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Dr. Darren Arlo as the state and federal programs director.
I'll second.
Move to the second, appoint Dr. Arlo as state federal programs director. Chance?
Yeah.
Deb?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
They approve five zero. Move to number nineteen, to stay. Move to number nineteen, to stay, discuss take possible action, accepting the twenty-two, twenty-three audit, annual financial review. Just wanted to give everybody a little extra time to look it over. Anybody have any questions on that?
I'll make a motion to accept the budget allows it for twenty-two, twenty-three, and the first one here.
Got a second?
Second.
Wyatt, second?
Thanks, Kelly.
Was that Wyatt's?
Wyatt's second.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you, you're welcome. I like doctors.
Move to second to accept the financial audit for twenty-two, twenty-three. Wyatt?
Yeah.
Mike?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Deb?
Yes.
Chance?
Yep.
Five zero. And same thing on number twenty, discuss and take possible action, accepting the twenty-three, Plano Public Schools annual report. Got that information filled in?
Which one thing was changed, wasn't it? And was that why we brought it back?
Posper student. It wasn't correct, so. Everything should be correct on there now. And yeah, you gotta basically color copy of the package. So just the motion to approve that report.
I'll make a motion that we accept the Plano Public Schools annual report.
I'll second.
Move to second to accept the twenty-two, twenty-three annual report. Myself, yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Chance?
Yeah.
Deb?
Yes.
She carried five oh. Move to number twenty-one, discuss take possible action on terms of superintendent contract for twenty-four, twenty-five. That would be the terms that we laid out through last one, the policy I think we need.
The whole thing was printed in paper, took up a good page. You know, so, as required by policy, I mean, posted on the website, superintendent transparency, I mean, that's the way it is, doesn't I, I don't know that, that in every district, they have to print the entire contract in paper, that's fine, it has to be put on the website, somehow made publicly available, but, and two readings, now this is the first year we've, we've followed that in policy, and so it's not unreasonable by any means, so.
Everybody should have had a chance to look at it.
I think so. Only changed, you know, two out of nine pages, just changed two figures, it wasn't complicated.
The terms would be, just like we talked about last month, taking a motion to approve that contract.
I'll make a motion that we approve the terms of Dr. Darren Arlo's contract for twenty-four, twenty-five, as you guys presented.
I'll second.
Okay, move to second to accept Dr. Arlo's contract for twenty-four, twenty-five. Myself, yes, Deb?
Yes.
Chance?
No.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Okay, approved four to one.
Thank you.
We'll move to number twenty-two, discuss and take possible action on contract renewal for Mrs. Jen Hodson for twenty-four, twenty-five.
So Mrs. Hodson and I had her annual evaluation, did that in December, so that's done. And I one hundred percent recommend that we have Mrs. Hodson back as our elementary principal.
Discuss terms, next one.
Yeah, they'll have an opportunity to share with you their requests for contract terms.
I'll make a motion that we approve a contract for Mrs. Hodson for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
I'll second.
Move to second and then to accept Mrs. Hodson's contract for twenty-four, twenty-five. Deb?
Yes.
Chance?
Yep.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion approved five oh. Number twenty-three, discuss take possible action on contract renewal for Mr. Kyle Schmidt for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Now, same circumstances with Mr. Schmidt, had a conversation in December, so the annual evaluation is done, and recommend without reservation that he be offered contract reduction.
I'll make a motion that we approve contract review for Mr. Schmidt for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
I'll second.
As we move in second to approve Mr. Schmidt's contract for twenty-four, twenty-five. Mike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Deb?
Yes.
Chance?
Yep.
Wyatt? Yes.
The motion approved five oh. And I think it says to number twenty-four, discuss and take possible action to offer Plano Public Schools four oh three B, four fifty-seven B retirement plans exclusively through ESDAC Compass Financial Consortium.
I guess we kinda went over this earlier, I don't know, do you have anything to add, myself?
No, I just, it'll, it'll take some, some accounting time on Kelly's part, but then obviously when we go from a handful of employees that have a payroll investment to all of our employees, hopefully, if that's negotiated and agreed upon, we'll be, we'll have really a pretty, pretty significant adjustment to compensation benefits for, for certified staff. But this will just make things easier to have one plan provider, right now we have two. If we wanna do this as a school district, as a school board, it just makes it a lot easier to have one plan provider.
Do you guys remember what we're trying to do here, once you have retirements?
What, what was the benefit of having two?
Uh, the, one was a four fifty-seven versus a four oh three, and they have different max amounts of contributions, different penalties of early withdrawal. There's, unless you're a financial, unless, you know, the, the, the specific differences may have to do with the age at which you start them, the age at which you intend to retire, so.
Taxes on the way in, Alan taxes on the way out.
It depends on whether you go with a Roth or a traditional.
But basically, the new one does both plans, it's just through the same company instead of, before we had two different companies that did.
Two different plans, yes.
Well, this is one of the companies we worked with. Yeah, but we had, but the other company only get one plan or something. That's not much. Like, you only did, you had like all the four oh threes with one guy, and all the four fifties.
Four oh three Bs this year, four fifty-sevens here, since they were already our four oh three B provider, ESDAC Compass Financial couldn't do the four oh three because we already had a four oh three B provider, we need board to authorize. Okay, we're just gonna have one four oh three B provider, so it's as simple as me sharing with our, our four oh three B provider folks, say, we, we've got a, a new plan provider, our board wants to have one plan provider. Won't make any difference to them, they only have, I think, five employees, so it's not by any means lucrative business, it's just, oh, okay, we, we just, we've lost it to somebody else, which is the nature of business.
And so each teacher has their own decision, how much they wanna put in?
Over the, the minimum twenty-five dollars, and we're gonna get part of that for them, and if they don't wanna do the rest, then we won't give them. Our, our, so, we're starting out a new teacher, as we give them fifteen, they've gotta come up with ten. Well, if they don't wanna come up with the ten, they, they aren't gonna get the fifteen, because we're not just gonna give them fifteen, if they aren't gonna do the ten, they're gonna retire. So they have to put theirs in, and then, what we're looking at right now is when we have fifteen here, is we'll pay the oh twenty-five, if they wanna do more, they can do any amount they want, it could be twenty-five, so.
That, that's the, the agreement we hope to reach, right?
Right, yeah, that's what we're still working on with them.
Yeah, and, and primarily, it's just to prime the pump, get them started, because they'll, they'll take over and go well above the twenty-five, and eventually, and some of them will take probably too long before they're like, well, okay, now that, now that I've got something going here, they'll be kicking me quite a bit, compared to the fifteen dollars per district contribution.
So we're basically making them put ten dollars if they want our fifteen.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Cause that's the ownership, too.
The earlier you start, the better.
But the numbers are the discussion and the approval next month, this is just to have one, one plan provider to allow us to do that, which will be, that's still, it's still a discussion, but I think it'll close hopefully pretty quick and be ready for next month's approval.
I'll make a motion to approve offering our retirement plan options exclusively to Compass Financial Resources.
I'll second it.
Move to second and then to go with Compass Financial Resources, retirement plan options. Deb?
Yes.
Chance?
Yep.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Me also, yes. I vote. Move on then to our Activity Director's Report, number twenty-five.
There's no junior high basketball tomorrow, if you're wondering, so. Yeah, just happened.
You learned that?
Yeah, just, yeah, at that time.
Go.
So there you go, you're free tickets tomorrow. Both boys and girls were holiday tournament champions, so that part was awesome over the Christmas break. Speech season is underway, so Mrs. Mosel and Mr. Juden are fast and furious after it. Uh, the new volleyball system you guys approved is all in, so Mrs. Miller's gonna get that put up and get a picture of it, make sure we have all pieces for next year. Uh, tracking forms, half of them are in, and then, um, conference, I put, hopefully, we get to move forward with that, so we're gonna start working on some details and doing some different things with that, getting all that information finished up and finalized, so as we start conference play here in about two weeks, so. That's about it for us, we're out of snow date, so if it snows, we're gonna start canceling events, so that's where we're at on things.
It's probably gonna, it's supposed to snow again Thursday night.
Yeah, I know, I'm hoping not, but.
You and me both.
A lot, Chance?
Like, I heard three to five.
Really?
But if it takes an inch, I mean, and if it keeps blowing, it's, we're so full, but it's not gonna matter.
Don't worry about the forecast, it's done in the past, it starts out nothing and everything.
Exactly, or it starts out high and it goes down. I wish I could be a weatherman, cause I could be wrong every day, it can be fine.
All right, well, we'll hope the weather cooperates this week, third and last week.
Are you gonna make up the freshman sophomore?
Nope. As of now, we have everything rescheduled, but except that, and a girls' wrestling tournament, the board one's canceled, so.
On that new, um, conference deal, is that, that's for, like, you guys are shooting for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, right?
Yep.
Okay.
So we can start scheduling.
Cause you gotta have like a year ahead of time.
Yeah, we do schedules two years in advance, so that's what, we're gonna start trying to piece some things together there.
And that's when the new footballs deal comes out.
That all comes out here in February.
Which has no effect on the.
Okay, we move on to twenty-six, Principals Report then.
We, uh, went to Norfolk this morning and listened to Sam Zeland entertain us, and then our team entertained a crowd of none. It was great performance by our part.
Standing ovation.
They canceled all the sessions, so we'll be roaring and ready to go next year, but, yeah, it was, Sam's always a humorous, artistic entertainer, so it was good for everybody to kind of hear him and his message. We're almost on the CPR, and first aid, we have to reschedule that. Our hundredth day is obviously going to be moved, I'm gonna give up on scheduling that until next week. And other than that, that's nothing too pressing.
Yeah, since last month, we've had about five days of school.
And we have another meeting in like two weeks, so.
Have you missed the playground equipment this last couple of days?
No, it's probably buried in the snow out there.
No, it's not damaged.
All right, well, that's it.
He wasn't over there.
Did we, didn't we just pay?
The what?
The bill, as I said a whole bit of month, I was so irritated that installers didn't.
No, we, no, it is not, we didn't.
It's not paid yet, I haven't even paid the bill on that.
They didn't, no, I knew you'd come and have this conference.
I know.
Say that, they were like, okay, 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 before you could even say anything, I promise.
I think we told Julie we're gonna wait till it got installed.
Okay.
Cause that.
They're gonna want their bill, it's one of those, well, we're not paying it until you install it, we're not installing it till you pay it, well, doesn't matter right now, you can't dig a hole in the ground anyway, so.
Oh, so it's not installed?
No, it's all sitting out there.
When did it get delivered?
Um, October, late October.
So they had like, yeah, like beautiful weather.
They, they don't have the laborers to, they, they did, as she said, we, we just, we did such a great job as a sales team, selling playground equipment, more so than we had installers. Well, okay.
Just maybe the salespeople should be installed.
I don't know that that would've changed our decision.
No, that's across the board, where you go.
Was there a contract at all on payment schedule?
No.
Uh-uh.
Just all word now.
Yep.
Yeah.
But even in our contract is the labor to install it, so.
Right.
A lot of times they want a certain amount down, certain amount up, and certain amount up.
Well, one of these days it'll snow, no? Right now, it certainly doesn't seem like it, yeah, it will warm up. Okay, thanks, you guys. Go to twenty-seven, the President's Report, um, I just remind you guys that are up for election next year, decisions are coming up here by fifteenth of February again, so. If anybody has, I, I think I know what you're answering. Not quite sure I know these two yet, we do need to help.
I know, I'd love to, and I'm just.
I already signed up, so.
Signed up, okay.
Yeah, I do as yours for the day.
Well, that's good to know.
You guys aren't getting rid of me anymore.
I'm just waiting on.
Yeah. We understand the situation, so.
So if I run, and I'm down in Omaha for three months, how does that work?
You get an excuse absence.
I can have an excuse for, because he has to stay there one to three months if he has a transplant.
What is the excuse?
How does that work, Dr. Arlo?
You're gonna, you're excused, it's unexcused absences where your membership is in jeopardy.
It's a black mark.
So an unexcused would be like if I just didn't even tell you and I just didn't show up, right? If you did that two or three months or all.
That's fine, okay.
Certainly, like, you know, bad guys running.
Sorry, I don't do it the last three months, I'll excuse that.
I'll excuse that.
He's always a lead.
Um, the other thing I had, I had a, got a letter here from teammates thanking us for the thousand dollar donation. Yeah, I also have some of your packet there, uh, Mrs. Hodson's principal.
Congratulations.
After your hats.
Did you get a big plaque for that?
I did. A trip?
A trip.
At Chilagas.
She did a trip to Vegas.
Okay.
Did you, plaque, did you get a plane ticket?
So other than that, I want everything else, we move on to twenty-eight, Superintendent's Report.
I did wanna ask you, uh, Mr. Assistant, next month, you wanna have a noon meeting, February?
Oh.
Uh, you wanna continue that?
I think, are you guys okay with that?
I do have a couple things I'd like to show you, uh, building grounds wise.
Are they under snow?
What's that?
Is it under snow, though?
Uh, I'm sure it'll warm up, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
Be nice to see you in the garage.
We'll, we'll plan, uh, let's plan a lunchtime meeting, maybe heat eleven-thirty meeting at noon. Uh, that'll be the second Monday of February, whenever. So, okay, so I, I have my general, regular updates. This was a good month to get fifty-five thousand dollars, December is a lean, lean month, January is one of the more lucrative months, but we did get our REAP grant funds, uh, so that was helpful. We've started to have some, uh, teacher shortage, you know, they're saying, school districts just do whatever you can do locally, you know, cause they're trying to, you know, encourage, uh, kids walking up and down your hall, and, and so I've visited with you about what I have asked our teachers to do and so on, but just minimal things, but I did start to have gatherings, if you are at all interested in the education profession, you know, come and meet in the, in the media center, and and so I had a group of high school kids, about ten or twelve, uh, so we just started to have some conversation about some things they may not be aware of, some boring things about how a salary matrix works and and how benefits work for a teacher, and how in-person works as a teacher, maybe didn't really realize that it's not just a low-paid job and that's all there is, there are other benefits, you know, the calendar. We've started to have some teacher shortage, you know, they're saying, school districts just do whatever you can do locally, you know, because they're trying to, you know, encourage kids walking up and down your hall, and so I visited with you about what I have asked our teachers to do and so on, but just minimal things, but I did start to have gatherings, if you are at all interested in the education profession, you know, come and meet in the media center, and so I had a group of high school kids, about ten or twelve, so we just started to have some conversation about some things they may not be aware of, some boring things about how a salary matrix works and how benefits work for a teacher, and how in-person works as a teacher, maybe didn't really realize that it's not just a low-paying job, and that's all there is, there are other benefits, you know, the calendar, a hundred eighty-five day contract calendar, you know, snow days, you know, teachers love snow days, a lot of variety of those things, so we've had that conversation, I, I, I take them on location and visit to a couple of, visit with a few other different teachers, had a visit with Mrs. Jacobson, who's gonna be teaching a dual credit education course through Wayne State next year, so those kids will start to get some dual credit towards their intro to ed courses, so we're just trying to give kids a little, pique their interest, propel them maybe a little bit on that pathway, and then hopefully, you know, we want them to find their way back here at some point in time. So, so that's, you know, kind of going on, and we'll, like I said, we'll include a lot of our, because they're surrounded by mentors, and this is what I've told them, I said, you are surrounded by education mentors, and so we're gonna take advantage of that and have some of our teachers tell their story about why they became a teacher and what it means to them, and, you know, beyond the things that they, that students may hear about education, or the things that they maybe think they know just based on their observations as a student. So that's happening, and hopefully that pays dividends in the future. Zoom phones, Mr. Tom Sauer, will probably come see you next month, or the next month, or the next month, about technology for next year, he usually makes an annual visit to the board as maybe we start preparing budget, we, we've got a kind of an archaic phone and P A system, more so in this building than the elementary, but both, but both of them really sort of need, we need kind of one better system, some rooms have phones, some don't, well, sure enough, there's something called Zoom phones, and we're investigating that, and I've talked to five schools that have already invested in them for their school, and, you know, what they think about it, so we're gonna prepare a presentation to you probably in a couple months, but Tom Sauer's, that's one of his top five priority items for the spring is to, he actually brought it to us, his administrative team first, and we said, well, let's, let's move forward, what, what do we need to know? I had a, were you guys on that too? We had a Zoom meeting on Zoom phone, about Zoom phones with Tom in my office, for a half hour one day, looks, you know, kind of interesting, we need a solution to what we currently have, and this could be it, we'll find out, Jen mentioned CPR, all the staff at Plankton Public Schools are gonna be certified in CPR, Nurse Beth, who we contract with, is spectacular, so she's been training us, she also trains our freshmen, is that right, Collins, our freshmen in health are also trained in CPR and basic first aid, but primarily CPR, so that's good, we'll be talking with you a little bit more about esports, which is kind of becoming an emerging activity, it's, a lot of people think it's just kids playing video games, and on the surface, that is what it is, but it's called, it's electronic sports, the, our NSAA just had a proposal for it to become an NSAA activity, well, that, that won't happen anytime soon, because the esports folks don't want the NSA anywhere near them at this point in time, they're still kind of a club sport in schools, but there is an organization, there's a statewide organization that kind of governs it and organizes it, and so we're kind of looking into that, because we probably have a population of kids that this would be good for them to do something collectively, sponsored by the school, supported by the school. So we'll maybe talk with you more about esports at some point in time, Unicameral is up and going, and it's a short session, some sixty day session, it'll go quicker, next month I'll have some good updates for you, I could bring you some of the bills that have been introduced already, but if they don't have legs, I'm not gonna bother you with it, if they make it into February, those that could affect education or come from education or revenue, I'll, I'll bring those to you so that they're kind of on your radar. Jen mentioned Winter Workshop, it's too bad that all our breakouts got canceled, because I wanted to share with you the leadership that Plankton Public Schools was providing for presentations that, that they were going to provide at Winter Workshop today, I think there were about six or eight of us total, between teachers and administrators, and so that, it just, it just, it happened, that's what it is, you can't control it, so they got wiped out, that's fine, but our staff did attend, we had about four of them that, that couldn't make it to Norfolk, they attended virtually, so that was a nice option, but this morning, practically all of us were at the Johnny Carson Theater in Norfolk Public Schools with about three hundred other teachers from Northeast Nebraska, maybe four hundred, and we had, we had a terrific presentation from a nationally known motivational speaker who speaks primarily to educators, so that was excellent. Motor Coach update, you can see the figures right there, we got thirty-six, five out of eighty thousand, and again, they have two years from about right now to get the rest, so it's not a concern at all, but the concern right now is that we wish it were indoors, and it's not, so I, you've heard that I've kind of pushed out, hey, who's got space for a twelve foot, four, forty foot, why, you know, I haven't received any, any notifications yet, Mike Rafer, was very generous, let me bring it into his beautiful, warm shop to wash all the road grime and salt off it a couple weeks ago, it needs it again, I hope it starts when I try, on about Wednesday, we, we really wish we could house it indoors, it's been outdoors its whole life, so I mean, they, they live outdoors, but we sure wish we, we had a solution, and maybe it'll be when something opens up the RV storage, you know, a mile east of town, maybe that'll be a solution someday, hopefully sooner rather than later, or something else comes up, but just so you're aware, and I know you already are, but just keep your ear open, or if you know somebody, maybe you can ask, you know, I think we pay a reasonable rent, you know, whatever you would authorize, you know, for rent, for indoor storage for that, but if it doesn't happen, it doesn't, we've got it plugged in where it's sitting right now, that's probably where it'll, you know, the private is permanent, storage until we find something indoor, where, you know where it's sitting right now, just, just north of the, or south of the act shop, right along the, because we've got a one-ten outlet right there on the side, so it's got two plugins, and hopefully she'll, she'll start. And there's your enrollment summary, no meetings out of district vacation and second ballots, and that's all we have.
How many snow days do we have?
Well, I, you know, we, we, we do have enough hours yet, if, we're well over the thousand eighty hours that we need at the high school required by Rule Ten, so I always schedule well over that, thousand eighty's the minimum hours you need to have, no school schedules thousand eighty and stops, it's a local decision, and if you make up snow days, some school districts do, some don't, depending upon if you're still above the thousand eighty, so I would say if we have to capture more days, if we have two or three or four more, obviously we'll talk about those spring break days in March, the Monday after Easter, and then we can always extend Fridays to full days instead of early dismissals, because that would give us an extra hour and a half every Friday, so we'll, we'll be fine, but we're gobbling up some time right now, that's for sure.
Even if it's a hundred and eighty-five teacher days, that hits us before the student hours.
Yes, school boards generally talk more about the teacher contract days than they do the student hours, so every, every missed day, well, every day we have a ten thousand dollar payroll per day for certified teachers, and they're paid whether we have school or not, and as we've visited just about every year, practically all of your teachers work more hours than eight to three-thirty, hundred eighty-five days a year, so having a snow day, a paid day off, is somewhat compensation for all the extra hours that most every teacher already invests, so, but that, again, that's a local decision, local district decision.
Nothing we can do about it, certainly, certainly better to keep them at home during this one, so.
Just would have been better if this was out during Christmas.
Yeah. It did, we're not at all.
Not at all.
All right, well.
Figure out if they have a school four or five days.
Okay, well, I think that's it, we'll adjourn the meeting.
Okay. Thank you. What's that?